So.
Okay, is everybody ready to go? It's seven thirty here. I like to start on time if you're ready. Shall we?
Yep.
Okay. Let's call the meeting to order. It's seven thirty on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the regular city council meeting of the City of West Liberty. I'm Mayor Ethan Anderson, and we have with us tonight Mayor Pro Tem Karen McFerrin and city council members Dominguez, Smith, Schultz, and Martinez. I guess we need to first approve the agenda by consent vote, and then we'll go into closed session. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. And we are going to go into closed session per IO Code twenty-one five C to discuss strategy with council regarding litigation. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session? Second.
Moved and seconded to go into closed session. This is a roll call vote. Councilmember Martinez.
Yes. Sorry.
No problem. Councilmember Smith.
Yep.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Okay.
Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Reesner.
Thank you. Yeah, can you sign off? And it is a matter of public record to talk to anyone.
Sure. Let me, you want me to sign it right now?
Thank you for your work on that. I appreciate it. Yep.
And today is February 7.
Absolutely. For this art.
And then everybody was not.
Been like six months. I thought we. It'll be our original, it's not signed, so you'll have.
I'm sorry. Okay, you have what you need? Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here. Hey. Great. Again, welcome, everybody. We'll carry on with the rest of our meeting. Picking up with item four, approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
So there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Uh, yeah, sorry, I keep forgetting tonight to ask for discussion. Um, is there any discussion needed for the consent agenda of the minutes and the clerk treasurer report from November twenty twenty two?
I'm sure it's just a slight take a little bit under the meeting minutes is under the beer and liquor license. Uh, the first sentence is the second paragraph, the second line. You have LC zero zero three nine six five one, and she set a meeting with the ownership of, and then it drops off. To discuss ongoing, I didn't know if you meant to put political in there. So, um. Or so we'll have to go back and we're getting into our amendment. Oh, amend that, okay. Yep, so, um. So I'll just need to have a motion to amend the minutes. Can I make a consent agenda? Can I do that? Where are we at on that?
Have a first.
So now you're gonna have to.
We are, we already voted on it, actually. Um, didn't we? Oh, good. Okay, great. You caught me just in time. I thought we'd already done that. Good, great.
Motion.
Okay, so we're gonna vote no on this, and then we can do it again with the. With the amendment, all right? Okay, uh, it's moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no.
No, no, no.
The motion fails. Let's try again.
Uh, so I make the motion of approving consent agenda, but underneath the council meeting minutes of one seventeen twenty twenty three. Uh, second paragraph, second line of the word of the establishment, the linking is missing. After meeting with the ownership of. So I just make a motion to, um. Amend the meeting notes. Okay.
Okay, there's a motion to amend the, the meeting minutes as stated. Uh, can we just go ahead and vote on that and then proceed to, to vote on the consent agenda, agenda altogether?
I, it's. Within, the motion can be to approve the consent agenda. And with amending the minutes as you've stated. So. We need a second.
Could you, could you, you just, your motion with.
From Dominguez, yeah. Sorry.
You're good? Okay, great.
Fall for the.
Great, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with amendment. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The motion carries. We'll move on to item five, the public hearing for general purpose loan of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll need a motion to open the public hearing to enter into this proposed loan agreement. Is there a motion?
Motion, open public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to open the public hearing. This is a roll call vote. Uh, any further discussion? Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Good.
Hey, the public hearing is open. Are there members of the public who would like to comment on this proposed loan agreement? Are there any comments on Zoom? Has City Hall heard any comments?
I received nothing.
And no comments.
Great. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? If none, a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Good.
The public hearing is closed. We'll move on to resolution, resolution twenty twenty three zero one one seven dash zero six, which is. Um. A proposal to enter into the general purpose loan agreement. This is the electric upgrades for the Rainbow and Maxon Street. Uh, it's the electric portion of that project and the loan that's related to that. Uh, is there a motion to, um, approve this resolution?
Um, I apologize, but. Either my resolution's not numbered correctly, or I don't have two oh two three zero one one seven dash oh six. I have two. Oh, two three oh two oh seven dash oh six. So the resonant.
Gotcha, there's a typo in the agenda. Yeah, let me say it again, resolution twenty twenty three zero one zero seven dash zero six. Thank you for that clarification. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Yes, motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Any discussion?
So just that the resolution, the only thing is, is that, um, the official resolution document, whatever we go with the number on there. And all the numbers, all the numbers. All they're reflecting is the dates and the passage. So, yes, they should be consistent, but just better clarified that we'll go with the number that's actually on the official document of the resolution. And so if it's not on the, on the agenda, if it's different, we're gonna be okay as long as we recognize.
Sure. I appreciate the clarification, though, because that's why I say the number, so we make sure we all know what we're talking about. So that's a. That's, that's good to be, to be clear about. No problem. Um, it happens. Does everyone understand what this, what this one is? We already did the two point six million dollar.
This, this amount will actually be included in that as part of that overall two point six million dollars. It should be. The electric piece is not a central corporate purpose. So that's why the bond council recommended that we improve this resolution, even though we intend to use geo funds to pay for the entire project.
And when you, just because, uh, some of us are new, so when you say geo funds, can you specify just?
Be a geo bond, a general obligation.
General obligation, yep, so we all know terminology.
Is covered by a tax.
Um. So actually, I wasn't clear about that. So this, this three hundred and fifty is, is actually part of the two point six.
Yes, and actually, when we go to sell the bonds, I guess now maybe a good point to bring it up. We, Lee and I have been working with Bank Summers to kind of write size what that bond will be, and it will be less than a two point six, if it's. Two point three is change, as I recall. I mean, I can give you exactly what you want. Um, we, they initially were going to, um, market that on the twenty first, uh, February. But with the holiday being on the twentieth, they recommended maybe we might want to wait and either do a special on the twenty eighth or do it our regular meeting on March seventh. And he said it really didn't matter to him, uh, which he would prefer. Um, I guess Lee and I have talked about it, and I don't think interest rates are gonna change until about the third week of March is what I've been reading. So, but, uh, I know we're talking later about doing a budget. Work session on, on, on the twenty eighth, so we could do that. Either night, either your next regular meeting, your regular meeting on the seventh, or we could do it in the special meeting on the twenty eighth.
I think we would leave that to your best judgment, so unless you want a decision from council, but.
My recommendation would maybe go to the first meeting of March.
Yeah, that, that, that might as well, we're in seven.
Just, just from an investor perspective, the market's an end of month versus first of month. And then, um, typically, if the, the rate is gonna change, it's gonna, it'll happen. We'll be mess up on the, where the rate would be increased. It's not gonna go down, so.
Are there any questions from council about that issue? Can we leave that with them? Okay, I think, yeah, whatever you think is best there, we'll, we'll follow your lead on that one. Uh, any other discussion about this resolution? The three hundred and fifty thousand dollar electric piece. Hearing none, then it will be a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yep.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah.
Item six, a, another public hearing, uh, certifying the maximum tax dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Uh, I will ask for a motion to open the public hearing on certifying the maximum tax dollars. Um, for the twenty twenty three, twenty four budget.
Motion to open public hearing, certifying the tax dollars. Second.
Moved and seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion? A roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yep.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
The public hearing is open. Is there any member of the public here with a comment? On this one? On Zoom? Have you heard any questions or comments about this one? Okay. Hearing none, I will accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
It's moved and seconded with such flair to.
Next thing.
Appreciate. It's moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Again, a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yep.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Good.
The public hearing is closed. Then I will accept a motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty three zero two zero seven dash zero seven. Which is the resolution approving this tax levy for the fiscal year.
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion? And actually, I would ask if, uh, you could just walk this through a, we talked a lot about it, the work session, but if, if you could just kind of. Walk us through it again briefly, that would be great.
So if you want to take a look at, um, so attached to your resolution is the public hearing that we're posting. And, um, this public hearing, what we're doing is we're, we're setting the tax levy, um, specifically for the items listed here. And the proposing uses that, um, ju-. At my final budget, that we will not exceed that percentage of tax levy, um, with those items. We're keeping our tax levy, um. Consistent with what we did in the previous fiscal year, as we are anticipating, um, no more than two and a quarter to levy for debt. When it comes time to finalize the twenty twenty, the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four fiscal budget. And so then that way, that we minimize our overall debt levy within, um, maintain or stay under, um. I think there was the fifteen percent of what we were looking at as the overall debt levy to stay under.
Any questions from? Council at all? No? Okay, if there's no further discussion, then, um. Again, this is a roll call vote for this, to approve this resolution. Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah.
The resolution passes. Item number seven is a public hearing for the amendments that, uh, council decided to make to the electric rates. And.
Motion to open public hearing for second.
It's moved and seconded to open the public hearing. Any discussion? A roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez. The public hearing is open. Are there members of the public here to talk about electric rates? Council, have you heard anything about this one? From anybody?
I haven't received any. Just to clarify, this is just, just to be on the record, this is just the administrative fee. It's not. An increase for, um, residential or, or commercial in usage.
Let's, let's look at it. It's on your, it's, it's right after this, uh.
I think.
If you recall from when we had verbal, uh, there is a bump to the customer facility charge for the residential, and then council looked at. Increasing the, uh, commercial and the industrial penny until one hour. Was what we discussed last time we got verbal.
I thought that's, yeah, what I read, but.
So it's highlighted in yellow in the.
Yeah, I left the, I, I left what the comment rate is and highlighted it. The new ones. Yeah, that was there, that was in. For, um.
That was her recommendation, and she actually prepared that for.
So just to go through it.
Oh, I gotcha, okay.
Dave, you want to walk through what each of these are, just to kind of state them, or do you want me, me to do that?
I, I can walk through them. On our residential customers, we're, we're gonna be taking the customer facility charge from fifteen to twenty five dollars a month, but the. Energy charge will, or the kilowatt per hour charge will remain the same. Um, when we look at commercial customers, there was no change to the customer facility charge. Verbal felt both the commercial and the industrial. Uh, facility charges, um, were appropriate, but she did recommend increasing a penny per kilowatt hour. So that would take the commercial from nine point three five cents per kilowatt to ten point three five. Then as you look, commercial consumers minimal use, which has always, uh. Been in comparison to what our residential rate is because of the lower usage. So that would take their facility charge would mirror what it is for the residential going from fifteen to twenty five. But it is commercial, so the kilowatt on the energy side, uh, goes up a penny from nine point three five cents to ten, ten point three five cents. And then on the large industrial, the customer facility charge remains at a hundred dollars, and the, uh. Kilowatt charge goes from six point six four cents kilowatt to seventy point six four cents. And then, um, as you recall, we, as, as part of Verbal's recommendation, was that. The part of this ordinance, that there would be that five percent increase to the customer service charge, which was the non-energy charge. So when you looked at it overall for the entire, it's about a two percent increase, I think is what she said, but in a non-interview, it'd be a five percent going forward. For the next few years, and then there is a uh change in the, on the demand meter rates. Again, five percent, but the uh base energy charge is gonna drop from zero point zero six seven cents a kilowatt to. Zero point zero four three six, and then we um. Add into language, this is part of our pending start code of ordinance, so that's a piece that we add into that.
And that that happens automatically, right, that five percent.
Yes, and then the other thing that I forgot to mention was that. Um, as we look to try to smooth things out, rather than looking at that rolling average uh uh as a three month, that's gonna be looked at as a six. So that's highlighted at the top of that uh third.
Yep.
Or the second page, there, I have one.
We're also striking the letter E.
The striking E.
We have um customer service rules.
Right.
Um, that is addressed anywhere, so we're striking it to remove it from the order.
Say, I I wanted to, I wondered about that, so explain that to me, you saying it's already referenced where in the customer service rule?
So the customer service rules, when we updated the customer service rules, we know the city of Wausau, we no longer. Provides a private security lights. Um, the existing ones that are in our our grandfather until that light is no longer functioning and then it's removed.
So it's not an option anymore if somebody wants to. Ask for one of those.
Right, and so um striking, we're striking it from the ordinance. Since we, we want to be consistent with the electric service rules that council approved.
Okay. How many of those are out there now?
Anything changes, then we'll go back and then, we would never add it to the ordinance, so we stay within the electric service rules. So either way, we would want to strike it from the ordinance.
Sure.
How many, Ed, do you know how many would be out there for security lights? I I think there's at least two on Third Street that I know of.
There's more than two.
So, but that's what, I mean, that's what I've known, but I'm sure there's more in the city, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of them in the alleys that they actually have in their back.
Yeah, yeah, but if a homeowner wants to set that up on their own, they're welcome to do that. We're just not going to be maintaining or providing for it, correct?
That's correct.
Which is what had been done in the past.
That is correct as well.
We're we're off topic, but I want to understand that, so if someone wants a light in the alley, what do they have to do?
They will get an electrician and have an electrician install it in their backyard or off their garage or whatever.
Not on a pole.
Not on this, not on the city's uh.
Yeah, okay.
We have one, I mean, our our garage camera has a really bright floodlight.
Yeah.
It looks like it was not expensive at all, it's probably cheaper for the for the.
Yeah, there used to be a a light in the alley of my old house and one day it just wasn't on. And so I was talking about it with the neighbor and he said, yeah, I stopped paying for it, it turned out that it was, you know, I thought it was a public. Light, but it was something he'd been paying for all of you, so that would be an example of one of these, I guess.
Yeah, and then, and then I, sorry to be redundant, but.
Okay.
Uh, numbered six, the five percent increase, that's the the overall increase we have built in, correct? For the um. Energy charge.
Not in, it'd be the non-energy.
It it would be the the base charge, correct?
So if you think back to, to take Nurbel apart, she kind of broke down like the budget for the electric.
Right.
There are those non-energy costs.
Oh, they're not, yes, yes, yes.
Referring to that five percent.
Yes.
And that's where we need, but the overall budget, it really comes out to about a two percent increase.
But that will be starting uh, that will be like enacted um the beginning of fiscal year.
Yes.
Correct, like July one? No?
June thirty.
First, after June.
No, this is March first.
Now I'm talking about the five percent.
Five percent.
Oh.
Not the base rate charge increase on number six.
Said new rate.
The engineer is all, all of this is effective March first.
It does say commencing with the first billing date for each customer after June thirtieth of each year.
But I don't have that information, I don't, I wasn't provided that.
Hold on now.
I'm I'm, because we're, I don't know, but that's boring.
So it says June thirty, I'm sorry to be.
Yeah, the the electric rate changed to the base for the residential for kilowatts, created a change on March.
Correct, but that will not go into effect.
Till the April billing.
So, correct, because we have to implement that and our cycle is the fifteenth of the fifteenth, so I just want everyone to be aware that. Even though it says the first on here, the billing cycle that's gonna be affected will be the false one that we're. Right, but if if she implements it on March first, it's gonna be.
Right, and that's how we have it written in the language that is.
Said rates to be billed with the billing due in April based on the March fifteenth readings, it says.
So how I was provided the ordinance and the ordinance, and so I guess that's again, we have to go back and. Maybe it's table it and review it because what was provided to be written into the ordinance was that. Even though we won't possibly have it passed on March one. Once it is passed by the third reading, we we set it effective for March one, so when the meters are red. Um, for that March reading that's billed on the April fifteenth. That new rate is effective as of that billing, that's how it was explained. So I think that.
And it states in here that the race would be built, due as April based on March fifteen three, so I think it's correct.
I just want to make sure. It's gonna be implemented halfway through the month, through the billing cycle, so the full adjustment will not show up until that next month. Because you're implementing it in the middle of the billing cycle, is what I'm trying to say.
But the the five percent increase of the customer service charge is the. Yeah, okay.
So then that's.
That's right.
Is that, was that something that was to be consistent with? The the March one or was it to be June thirty?
I think that that happens on an annual basis at the fiscal year, I think, right, so. Yeah.
June third.
Yeah, okay, so I think we're in good shape. So the five percent increase of the non-operating costs.
That's what you need to clarify.
You'll actually have to to your new budget.
So it won't happen until next year, even though this is June thirtieth and we're currently in that portion.
No.
Yeah, that's.
That's a yearly.
That's a year.
Five percent yearly.
Right. Or July.
Yeah.
So that's the thing, it was like, if you may, you may get a record. Cause this will year or the next.
I thought it was this coming July first this year, but no, it's not for this coming.
It just said every year, June thirtieth.
Oh, that happens, right, it'll be next year.
So.
Five percent happens next.
Not right now.
I gotcha.
These rate, the rate increases currently are gonna be the ones that you're talking about, and then after that, it's a five percent increase. Without a.
It'll be automatic and we'll have to vote to stop it, if we need to stop it.
Right, right, and that was something that Nurbel said that based upon, you know, you 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 can view each year kind of where you set. With your revenues coming in, you're expensive, and the council could stop it for your, if they chose or it or could allow that.
Yeah. So, to reiterate, then people would start to see the rate change uh in their April billing. I think if that's, if I understand that correct, and then. This incremental increase that happens every year, they would see the first one of those in July. And then every July. Say that again? How so?
And if it's after June thirtieth, it should say effective July first.
Well, I think it, the way that it's worded, if I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is, so let me read the sentence. Commencing with the first billing date for each customer after June thirtieth of each year. So if I understand it right, it's like you finish out the fiscal year, June thirtieth comes, the fiscal year is over. And then, beginning with that next bill, they're gonna see every year of of that increase on it, do I understand that correctly?
So my concern, my concern with is just. Because even just within a few of us, we have different perceptions, and this is what gets cities into trouble.
Let's not do that.
Right, and I would recommend that we need um to clarify. In that. In in item six and seven, that we need to do a more clarification of the effective dates. Along with the clarity, and I have to take a look at the wording to say, maybe there's a possibility of wording in there. And a review of council words. I'm just saying from experience from the water in the sewer that has led us into um. Complications with others having different perception of what they're reading, and when I hear that. Not being clear amongst, I I would have to make the recommendation that we have to take it back and get more clarity. And make sure this reads as how it's going to be implemented, because when you have, if you have a transition in utility billing. And the perception is of this, but then that perception of that clerk is of a difference, then that's going to cause.
Yeah.
So then we have to vote this down and then.
You're you're just in your hearing right now, and you can.
Okay.
You can go ahead and close your hearing and then choose to.
Table it.
Handle the order until the next meeting.
So before I do that, we didn't, we didn't fully hear if there was any other public comments via Zoom. Or has, have you heard anything at City Hall about this specific rate increase, you should know about, council, I think I already asked, you heard anything? Okay. If no other public comments, then I would accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Move in a second to close the public hearing, any discussion? And this again is a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah.
The public hearing is closed, we'll now move to the actual ordinance, which we've been discussing. Twenty twenty three zero two zero seven dash zero two, this is actually uh the ordinance that we were just discussing. Um, to change these rates and.
Mister Mayor, the the motion to table this for further clarification. Second.
Moved and seconded to table this ordinance.
Good day.
So I'm I'm trying to talk with Sherri here, and I'm trying to, because of the timeframe of passing this ordinance. So um I was going to ask that you could make the motion to to. To get it into discussion, so then we can finish up our discussion on order, there is a possibility that you can make the motion with the amendments. As stated and still pass.
All right.
First read, because you're gonna go through tomorrow with it.
I would, I would recommend, I would, I would recommend that we, uh uh to council, I would recommend that we. Take the time, let City Hall write it exactly as it's gonna be written, and then we'll read it. And vote on it, just to eliminate any confusion that, like you're saying, if that sounds good, it'll delay it, but.
Are we able, are we able to skip the other readings for something like this or no, in the future?
Probably not advised.
You would do, if you did your first reading, the next meeting, you could do your second, third, and first meeting in March, if you chose to.
Yes.
I think. That would be your decision, I mean, as with rate increases. Might be good to go and go through the.
So, I mean, Sherry's gonna explain, and Sherry can explain to you a little bit more about if. And what I'm communicating, and I apologize, so what I'm communicating is that when we as staff don't be more diligent. About this prepared and ready to be passed, then it causes. It's gonna cause a delay in the ordinance being passed. But then on her side, what Sherry, the deputy clerk and overseeing with her knowledge of the utility. I'm gonna let her share the the implication by not. You know, going, here's one, one or two things, we can bring it back for a first reading. And you could still move to, if you don't have any public correspondence or any public that has an issue with it. You know, you can waive the third and and we could possibly be within the timeline that we need to be, but I'm gonna let Sherry explain. A little bit more, um, because I, again, it's important for us to make sure we get that verbiage correct. Um, so I don't know if you guys remember when Nurbel was talking about the implementation of the six months. From three months and how we have to hit it on the right season, otherwise it's gonna.
Yeah.
Cause more problems, that's my only concern from the utility building standpoint. Is if we continue to push it back, we're gonna be coming into that. Warm season where if you're coming off of that cycle, where you're not gonna have that same six month calculation, so that's my biggest concern for this portion. Um, it definitely could be met, as we said, if you waive that third one, we take it back, we look at everything, we all get together and kind of figure it out. I just want you guys to be aware of that portion of it, because that is a really big portion of the implementation on the utility billing side.
She recommended that it be implemented, I think it was in February, wasn't it? So already we're.
Pushing it out even further at this point.
Yeah. With potential.
Concern, just from the utility billing side, because I have a lot of knowledge on that portion of it, so that would be my biggest concern for it.
So Sherry, would you, would you think that would be a good idea, not, uh, maybe I shouldn't word it that way, but. If we change the verbiage to align with the same timeframe that we're changing this rate for the five percent each year. Because it will hit that low period or or however you.
So that's actually gonna be your higher period.
Oh, okay.
That's why the implementation is typically right when you're starting to come out of winter. Or right before you're, like, right as you're coming out of those summer months, like coming into the fall timeframe.
Otherwise, it has a potential to drag it up.
Yeah.
Through the summer, right, which is, I mean, it's, it all comes out in the wash, but it could be. Perceived as.
Correct.
A a hike.
Yeah.
I guess is the concern. Um, okay, well, how do you want to do this, council, it sounds like, you know, there might be a chance to. Approve this with some verbal amendments uh and sort through that, or perhaps wait until the next meeting and get it nailed down. On paper and then consider waiving the third reading, if we're still wanting to keep the timeline, do I understand those options right, that you're saying?
Uh, well, I have to, and I have to double check, because I think we have to public, we have to post the publication. Back to the first reading, and I mean, either way.
Oh, right, because you need to notify for the public hearing in advance, so we've pushed out another.
It's being tabled, and I have to clarify. Because I'm not clear on this, as I'm saying, is um do I have to post the public hearing again, because you're tabled.
Right.
Posted that we're going to be doing the reading, so the next, the next meeting we have would actually be your first reading, which goes in line with the public hearing.
Well, would you have, uh, council wanted to entertain it, would you have language for us? We would need a specific sentence. To amend this paragraph, these paragraphs, you know, from you.
I, that's when I I'm, I asked Sherry, is there a recommendation from her perspective? Um, from implementing a utility rate.
But I mean, if we're, if we were gonna do a verbal amendment, I mean, we would need to know the the exact words you would want.
That's what we were, I was asking, sharing is, how would we want to amend that wording?
Okay.
To make it state and make it clear about that this is going to be an an annual five percent increase.
So you're saying, I mean. I don't think we need to discuss it anymore, we would just need to know what the words are, if you have the words, maybe council could vote on it, if you don't have them ready. Can you say what they are now, then then we can entertain that, otherwise we just have to wait, I mean, I don't know what else to do.
We have to wait, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't have that for you.
Yeah, I think we just have to not.
I wanted to be right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Clear for customers.
And, you know, maybe that changes, I don't know what that changes as far as the implementation of the, the six month. Um, averaging.
So, I guess I was gonna ask, you could put this on the next reading as our first hearing. And then during holiday special meeting after, to do a secondary, possibly work the third.
It's a, I would have to, again, this would be a new.
Most you don't process for, you would all be a part of the same.
Like announce the public hearing and then have the public hearing and then do the readings.
No, you can, I mean, in all honesty, you can have the first. Of public hearing and you can take it and you can wave all of them, wave the other. It would be the first reading, but in the first reading, you can make the motion.
See, because because you've had your public hearing tonight.
Yeah.
Another thing we could do is just delay the implementation of that. Averaging change from three months to six months, you know, maybe that. Gets implemented next year, for example, if we wanted to. I think there's, there's options.
Well, well, I think we want to do it this year because of the necessity. We we have to do it. In order for the. It should be on track with what Verbal had come up with in her estimations. Is that, am I, is that correct? We, it's it's necessary to do it now.
Sounds like people agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so what we're gonna do then is uh. Vote on the motion and the second to table this ordinance for tonight. And then uh we'll just take our time with. Electric rate changes, which I think is wise. Well, I mean, take the time to get it clear.
Either that or now that we have a motion and a second. If I'm gonna throw another wrench in it, if if I decided I wanted to put a date for number six and seven. Uh to amend it, could I do that and then have the amended version?
Motion and a second to table it, you have to vote that down.
Down.
You have to make a new motion.
For an amendment.
Yep.
To amend.
For an amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this ordinance. Um is there any further discussion? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin.
No.
This is a motion to table it. Um, councilmember Dominguez. So if you want to table it, you would vote yes. If you don't want to table it, you would vote no.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez. Uh, the motion to table carries three to two with councilmembers McFerrin and Dominguez. In opposition. We'll move on to item eight, vendor voucher claims.
No.
Is there a motion to approve the vendor voucher claims list? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the vendor voucher claims list. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Public comments and correspondence. Are there members of the public here tonight? Are there any comments online?
Mister Mayor.
Uh, city council, have you heard any comments? Councilmember Dominguez.
I got one. Oh, sorry.
That's fine. We'll go down.
I will.
Go down the lines.
I will defer my time to Ashley.
We'll start with you, yeah, councilmember Smith.
Um, I got and we, I got an email from a community member. Uh letting us know that there's a large pile of junk and trash behind what used to be Jan's Flower Yard. And um there's wildlife maybe moving in there like cats and possums and and um. Maybe some pests, animals that we don't want. And also that's kind of an eyesore. So uh maybe let people.
It's already been addressed.
Okay.
We got the points uh last Friday and uh was given to our news person. And he went to his and then he went out and got the pictures and then went to.
I was just really excited. Just really excited on the chair.
Love it. So if any members of the public have something to bring up, please bring it to councilmember Smith. That would be a Smith. West Liberty IA dot org. Councilmember Martinez, public comments or correspondence? Councilmember McFerrin.
Uh, as a matter of fact, I do. Um, I also got the email in regards to the trash behind the former, I I don't know the address of Jan's Flower Yard. I that there was a possible vermin outbreak there. So I wanted to make sure that I relayed that. As that is uh definitely a health hazard. Um, and then also, uh, um. I keep seeing the, a stove on Spencer Street that's sitting there pretty lonely.
That's been addressed as well.
Okay.
I know.
Okay.
That was addressed the same day.
I think you would like to join some friends at the Reclamation Center. So I, I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, and also I wanted to share um. With everybody that uh I received correspondence from Carolyn Coven. Which some of you may be familiar with in regards, she's she the uh. Professor at the University of Iowa College of Education and she is again coming. To West Liberty in order to um write a grant. Through the University of Iowa to find out if she can get funding. For some um university resources that would come to West Liberty. And would assist West Liberty in the task of helping. Uh community members that are newly acquired US citizens. Or uh those from the Latino population, uh those who are in the citizen citizenship classes. Um become more engaged in uh civic involvement. So she wants to help um, you know, share those resources and work with the community and work with our city leadership. From business to government in helping um guide them and what we need as far as getting more. Involvement in uh civic leadership through uh that segmented population. So I wanted to share that then I've given her a um. A letter of intent for myself as as one of the city leaders to uh help uh with that effort. So I want to share that. And if anybody else is interested, you know, let me know.
So there's an opportunity for city leadership to put their name on that and join a letter of intent.
Yeah, to to, yeah.
Help get the grant.
Help, yes, yes. And she's, she's going to be writing the grant and submitting it. But she, she wants to make sure that there's partnership there.
Yeah.
I would love to do whatever she needs. She's been great, a great advocate for the city. I remember the last election cycles, they had. They had figured out there's like over two or three hundred red uh eligible voters who are Latino from West Liberty who did not vote. That's a huge number for our community. And so I think she's really motivated and.
She um has been coming to West Liberty for many years.
Yes.
I I want to say like. It's over fifteen years now and she's spearheaded a class. To help um immigrants or Spanish speaking immigrants that want to learn English. That's how it started. She was helping them teach, teach them English. And now she's spearheaded. Uh a course with, I believe, Dan Stevenson at the middle school. To have a citizenship citizenship class, so. Yeah.
Would you maybe be able to forward that information to the council members?
Oh, sure.
One of the.
Sure. But I wanted to share that.
Excellent. Any uh, anything else?
Um.
You drove by us, by the way, as we were walking to this meeting and I said, oh, that's councilmember Karen McFerrin. And my eight-year-old said, Karen McFlairin. So that that can be your new nickname.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. My son will love that. No, nothing against parents, nothing against parents. It's a middle school thing, it's a middle school thing. But um no, I I think that is it. That's all I have.
Councilmember Schultz.
Um, I have some questions about the council meetings and the recordings. And I know Brittany and we helped Melissa let me know that they're up on the YouTube channel. So recordings are posted there. There also, there's a link to the, on the city website, right? I know Brittany said she wants to be trying to make sure they get posted like the week of the meeting. And whatnot too, just so they're all there.
So they're timely.
Yeah.
Are you taking that on?
Um, I do uh most everything with the city website, so.
Yeah.
That's something that I've already been doing.
Great.
Are, are all the meetings posted like? Why is posted?
Yeah. So on the city website, um you're gonna see the agenda. And once the meeting is complete, you'll see the minutes and the video link. Um it's organized by year. Um so your most recent is gonna be at the top.
Good, if people want to be involved. Councilmember Dominguez.
No.
City manager, hold on.
Uh, just wanted to share with you, um last Friday, uh we've received notice from Rutherford Stone. In the Flinch, Dallas. Uh he was the attorney who was representing um the city regarding Nelson's complaint. Uh went to district court. And uh he said we had good news. There was an attached order, the judge wrote, it's dismissing all the claims against the city of defendants. And uh.
That's good news. Could you, I don't know if everyone's aware or not, but it just in a sense or two, could you refresh us on what the claim was there just to?
It's a very lengthy play.
It's a lengthy complaints about.
Just there, there was a bunch of things that I mean, if you're, if you want, we can forward you if you'd like to read it.
Okay.
Alright. I I don't want to say something that wasn't there, so I would just.
Sure, fair enough, yep.
There were a number of issues that they were claiming. We felt they were. More justified and of course, I agree with our trainings.
So is that done?
He said they could always um appeal it to. A certain court of appeals that he believes uh or they could ask the court to reconsider, but uh Mr. Stone felt that both were unsuccessful. Said if you heard anything else, he he was.
Great, thank you.
Great.
Check two off for this.
City clerk, any public comments or correspondence to add? Fifty clerk poker. Yeah, great. Okay. Excellent. Let's see, am I missing anybody? Okay, can we move on? Hold business. Beer and liquor license for Palenque Bar. We talked about this last time. And gave them a thirty-day extension. Um. What do we need to do here? A motion to approve this liquor license?
Wait, did anything come of it?
Let's, let's get the motion and the and the second on the table and then we'll discuss. This is just to bring it to the table. Is there a motion to approve the liquor license?
Well, should it be?
Second. There was a motion and a second to approve this liquor license. Uh. Continue with your discussion.
I'm just curious if we met, the city met with them, what the outcome was.
Yes. Chief Whirling was unable to. The meeting, so Officer Derek Holmes. Schultz and myself met with the folks yesterday and I think Josh is gonna have to leave that session.
Great, on Monday, it's me and they then, Officer Derek Holmes. Um, I know it's kind of nice chatting with them. They were very open to having us come in. We met at L Palenque. Which I will say it's very nice in there and they've made some updates and different things in there that I think look very nice. Uh, we kind of covered some things that also went over with Flamas. So uh one of the big things we were like, are there minors that come into the bar? We met with Maria was there, her son Hector. They were very adamant that, you know, no minors are in there. We did chat with them about, you know, IDing and if they have. Kind of different actions in place to make sure that they're taking IDs and whatnot to make sure that no minors are being served. And there's, he was very adamant, no minors are in there and. Um, they will look into possible ways when they do have events. With either having. Different bracelets or stamps if needed, just to clarify ages. And Hector also did say that they, I believe they, it sounds like they have a working relationship with some of the other bar owners as well. Because they kind of offered some advice to him and kind of some practices that they do as well. So I thought that was great. We asked them, we talked about capacity there. And I know they was gonna get Terry over there.
Have that she emailed with Hector yesterday and the thing that uh they they could be around a hundred and twenty based on everything. But the thing that drops them back right now is we have uh one, one exit. Terry did talk to them, but if they want to get a permit and get a second exit in, then that could take them up to a occupancy of a hundred and twenty of this.
Okay.
Uh, we talked about other things as well. Um we asked them about their last call procedures. He stated that you know about one forty-five, the lights that are typically dim throughout when they're open, they do get brighter. Um, we also kind of talked about if they have, if they do sell like the beer and similar to Flamas.
Yeah.
Um, they do have buckets available, but it's not something that they see a lot of people purchasing. But we did share with them kind of our our advice, like we shared with Flamas and maybe closing those sales earlier. And possibly even making a last call earlier than one forty-five as well, just to. Keep things moving along. Um, they're very open to our suggestions and wanted to make sure that. Things are being really good. No cameras in there, but he is aware that cameras from surrounding neighbors, they do kind of cover. Front as well. Um, and they were also very open to having an officer pop in every once in a while, just to kind of. Do a check and. Make their presence known and just. They were comfortable with that, so.
And I think they also mentioned that if they had events coming up that they would get ahold of the chief to kind of let him know so he could let the. Officers who were working that night could maybe make a couple more passes even through there, but they were. Very receptive, you know, we had kind of recommended, I think, what you do with Flamas in like a last call about one thirty.
Yeah.
They were very receptive and, you know, we explained if they had any additional questions, please reach out to Chief Whirling. Certainly help them. Take care of what I thought was a very, a very good meeting. They were very, very receptive to all the things that we had mentioned and. Looked like they had really nice establish.
Okay, so you felt uh satisfied with that conversation? Would you recommend to the council to approve this?
I would recommend to approve, yes.
Excellent. I don't know if uh Chief Whirling is on Zoom there. Um. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Chief Whirling, but if you want to add anything here, jump in.
I don't have anything to add. I got an email from Derek with all the notes and it echoes exactly what a councilmember Schultz had said.
Okay, excellent. And so you would recommend to approve?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Well, there you hear uh the recommendation and we have a motion and a second to approve this liquor license for Palenque Bar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion carries five to zero. Uh, ten B is a resolution to consider amending the Iowa Economic Development nuisance property and abandoned building remediation program contract. This is for the construction uh of the building that's gonna go across the street from Geary BP, if I understand correctly. Um, we'll, we'll need an explanation of this, but I'll ask for a motion to approve to bring it to the table.
A motion to approve resolution.
A motion to approve resolution. Second.
Moved a seconded to approve. Can you walk us through this one?
I started again. And you were, you just started this grand? You finished it or did you take this whole thing?
Yes.
Kind of, there was a grant that was received for the entire shop. For, it was a two hundred thousand dollar, no interest. We've been working with, uh, Travis and his banker and they were looking for some different things and the project didn't start it as quick. And under the initial agreement with the state, the first payment was supposed to have been made paid back to the state at the end of December of this past year. Um, I talked with Mr. Bosch with the state and I told him that I would be meeting with Travis after the first year to make sure he was gonna continue with the project. If he wasn't, then we would, um, probably just turn that back in if, if Travis wasn't ready and then he could apply for it again. Well, Travis and I met the first week of January. He had full intention of, of starting in the spring. So we talked to the states and, you know, we kind of missed that first payment, even though there hasn't been money. Uh, we tried to get him to go out to December of this year, but the first payment would come due in June. And Travis has signed in the development agreement with the city, which is kind of a forgivable loan for the two hundred thousand for, so it kind of, it, it was a no interest loan, but the project won't start getting taxed for a while. So I think a, a year ago, when we talked about this, the city's probably gonna be on the, since the morning came to the city, make at least the first payment. So part of that forgivable loan, and as that building comes up, then whatever the city gets paid in would be the, through, through the development agreement that Travis has signed on the property tax review. So what this does is just start that clock to where that first payment kind of do in June and instead of at the end of each year, it'll be then June third, by June third of each of the next four years.
Excellent. Any, any questions or discussion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote to approve this resolution. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
Yep.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah.
The motion carries. Uh, new business eleven A. You will see a letter in your packet from city manager David Hoeblen, um, which is a, a letter of resignation. And the, we'll be asking you to accept that letter of resignation and we'll hear some words from you, Dave, if you don't mind, after, uh, we bring this to the table, but is there a motion to approve and accept this, uh, letter of resignation?
Motion? Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve this letter of resignation. Uh, Dave, do you want to?
Yeah, just, it's, uh, it was kind of a difficult decision, uh, but I was offered a job with, uh, the city of Huxley, and I think my kind of deciding factor is that it's about twenty-five minutes away from where my mom lives. Um, I have not been around much the last fifteen years to see my mom or assist with, with different things. She just turned eighty-six the end of, or the beginning of January. After I came back to West Liberty, I have, you know, I was fortunate enough to see my dad twice before he passed, uh, last March. Um, I've had two of my three brothers and been kind of the primary folks that have assisted my mom probably for the last fifteen years. And I just kind of felt like it was probably my turn to step up to the place. That's really kind of the draw for me. Taking that position, it, it, it gives me an opportunity to be a little closer to my mom. And to assist her for the time that she, she has left with this voice. And it also puts me a little bit closer to my kids and my friends. But my mom was really kind of that driving factor. I just sit not see much of my mom in the last fifteen years. And that's, that's not an excuse, but just the distance, it just wasn't always easy. Now I won't have an excuse.
Thank you for your service and your time here. Any other comments or, uh, questions? Um, city manager Hogan will stay on through the end of March, uh, to give us a little bit of time to transition and finish up some projects. Uh, there is a motion and a second to accept city manager Hogan's resignation. Any further discussion? This is a consent vote and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion carries. The following three items are all related and, um,
Two items.
Two items. Okay. Um, no. No, it is three, right?
You're right.
Yeah. So let's, uh, bring these to the table with a, with a motion and then, uh, maybe, uh, David, if you could kind of walk us through what we're talking about here, that would, that would be helpful. Is there a motion to approve item eleven B? Uh, resolution deleting property from the West Liberty Urban Renewal Area.
Motion? Second.
There's a motion and a second. And Dave, could you just walk us through what these, you could probably kind of lump these three together, I think.
Yeah, this, um, particular project for all these, or this resolution and the, uh, or the two resolution and your, it's all, are dealing with the BIC subdivision. Um, for, for those of you that were on the council last June, it could be Omar, Karen, Dana, you'll recall that when we looked to do the building agreement with, with Travis Shield, we ended up taking his property there at the corner of Maxon and Columbus. We took it out of the urban renewal area. And then put it back in. And that was so we could start the clock on that for the redevelopment. And that's basically what we're doing here. So by the resolution tonight, um, you, you're gonna delete it. We would ask like you did last June, that you would do all three readings of the ordinance tonight. And then the third resolution is to set a public hearing, which would be set for March seventh. And prior to that, we, we have, uh, published the notes for the public hearing, and then we have to send a notice to the school district and the county, the, and their taxing entities that might be a part of the tip. And offer to have a meeting with them to kind of talk about what we're doing. Uh, we had nobody show up for our meeting with, uh, the urban renewal amendment, putting Travis's back in. And I don't know whether we'll have anybody show up. Those are kind of the steps that have been laid out by our bond attorney for us to, to be able to do that. I know that, um, at least with respect to, um, Jason Dumont, uh, we're working on a PNZ uh, meeting, the, he's looking to do a kind of a small rezoning change within that subdivision. And, uh, I think he's getting close to hopefully getting his development agreement signed, so we'll be able to move forward and, and he hopes, you know, we Leo and his crew have looked at the construction documents. So I think they've sent those comments back. And I know Jason's eager to get started on that project here this spring or early September.
So if everyone's following along, BIC subdivision, this is north of
Subway.
Uh, subway. Right, west of Dutton in that field where is, there's gonna be how many overall housing units go in there?
Between forty-five and forty-seven, it changes.
Okay. Um, exchanged hands a few times about who's gonna develop it, but it's moving forward now with developer named Jason Dumont.
There, there were some originals, some single family, there's some zero lot lines, and there's, uh, some, some multifamily. I think Jason, when he, over he, um, made a slight change and I think brought on three more additional, yeah, it's one additional single family home and then, uh, two homes that would be on zero lot.
When, when would council have a chance to see the, the layout for that?
Uh, I can, we, we've got the planning zoning, so we can shoot you kind of.
I think it'd be nice just to, just to kind of keep council in the loop on it, if they could follow along on, uh, on the development.
The reason that he's asked for zoning and it's on the single family lots, he wanted, he didn't quite get eighty foot width that's needed for a single family. Uh, and he talked about, I think, like Tiffin, they're doing it, and maybe North Liberty, they do like, uh, an R one and an R one D. Terry and I and Ken were there with Jason and we just said, you know, the R two would give you the single and or, or a two family. And he said, well, I will, you know, end the development agreement for the ones that were, that were rezoning that were set to be single family. He said that he would agree in the development agreement that those will stay at same.
So just to clarify, those still have to live before playing zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be heard to, I'm there that.
And then it would come back to you to approve.
Right.
Also, within the urban renewal, there will be planning, the zoning will have to meet some brand of recommendation.
That does.
And we did rename the urban renewal area as the Dutton Urban Renewal Area. Because we have multiple urban renewal areas under West Liberty and by renaming it, Dutton, it allows us to kind of have emphasis on the location um, of that, that parcel section of town. So.
Any question? What is the designation with urban renewal? Like what's special about it? Why do they need this? Why do we need this?
It's in, in, in order to be able to do like a tip rebate agreement to them.
I mean, I know what TIA, I know what.
I think finance, so like an urban renewal, uh, typically urban renewal is set out for either economic development, like.
Okay.
And that's based on state statute. So all cities have designated parts of their, our majority of communities, I would say, have designated parts of their communities as an urban renewal area that they want to see growth or light.
Okay.
But that was necessary to be able to be able to present them with the development agreement that you know, signs of that city proves going forward.
Okay. So this is a resolution and the next one is an ordinance?
Yeah.
Are they both roll call? Is it ordinance?
Oh, horrible.
Oh, sorry. Well, I know, or resolution, and I didn't know.
Yeah.
And then is that the free, the free?
On the ordinance will ask that you do your first reading.
That's the three readings. So do we have to make it a?
So when you get, so when you get to, um, so once you finish with your action on this, um, on this one, on this one.
Let's do it one at a time. So let's finish where we are and then, and then talk about what we need to do for the next one, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Um, so there's, there's a motion and a second on item eleven B. It's a resolution to deleting property from the West Liberty Urban Renewal Area. This is, if I could just say it in a colloquial way, it's kind of some technical things, right? To get the taxing agreement financing in, in, in place, um, in, in the way that needs to be. Uh, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, questions? All right. This is a roll call vote. Karen McFerrin?
Yes.
Uh, councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah.
The resolution passes. Then we'll move on to eleven C. This is an ordinance deleting property from the Tax and Commitment Fin- Financing District. Um, the, the same, the same area. Uh, to be honest, I'm not quite sure why we need a resolution and ordinance. Could, maybe you could explain that real briefly, just to, is there?
What can I make a motion?
Uh, sure. Yeah, sorry.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to consider, uh, to approve ordinance number two oh two, three oh two oh seven dash oh three and waive the two other readings.
So I just wanted to throw to you, like your motion, page one of that document that you have in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
So in page one of the document, your motion is, um, it's listed within that document. Okay? So the verbiage that we do is for the motion and then the second.
Okay.
Hold on, make sure I'm on, let me make sure I'm on the right page here.
So this would be page one for, um, we're going to the ordinance.
Or zero.
It's gonna be the, the legal documents providing the passage of norms to leave.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So councilmember McFerrin introduced an ordinance entitled ordinance number, I'm, I'm stating the number of this ordinance is two zero two, three, zero, two, zero, seven, dash, oh, three. An ordinance deleting property from the taxing from the finance district for West Liberty Urban Renewal Area of the city of West Liberty, Iowa, person to section four, three point one nine of Code of Iowa. And then when we have a second, then that council member, then that is your motion. For that, you submit it. And then you're going to have, and just following that instruction there, and then you go to, and it was moved by, the next council member is gonna make the motion. Um, and then we'll get a second and that's where, that's where the part is where you have the second motion and the way you look at third. So you have to get through the first and second.
Gotcha. You've charted it out for us here.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay.
So there's been a motion introduced. I'll ask for a second. If there's no second, we'll let that die and then you can restate it.
No, you need that second because that's the order of your ordinance. You have to have the first.
Yeah, her, her motion is to waive the second, the, the, the second and third readings. So I mean,
Be a long night.
Do you want to? That, uh, Dave, you, you guessed nine o'clock. We're not keeping your timeline here. Sorry, uh, councilmember Smith?
I was just gonna second it.
Okay. Uh, and, and maybe I'm over complicating it. Was her motion okay? Or, or can we, should we start over?
I, I think that, um, if we let the record say that, um, McFerrin's motion is pertaining to the official legal documents that is instructing how, I just didn't have the opportunity to draw that.
Sure.
To begin with, so.
Does it match your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Moved and seconded. Um, is there any further discussion? Are we clear with that? Is that sufficient? Excellent. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah.
The motion carries five to zero. Moving on then, we're looking for a motion on the second page here. To waive the how, how do we say this then?
So, um, a council member, I mean, um, the motion. And then you're gonna get a second. And then the statutory rule requiring an ordinance to be considered and voted on passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally cast and suspended. The mayor put the question on the motion and won't be called. So what I'm saying here is, one, if you make the motion, one, if you make the second, I've read aloud what your motion is based on the legal document.
Motion. And second.
It is motioned and seconded as stated. Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez? The motion carries five to zero. This, the last part on this sheet here, does that?
I was gonna say, we have one more to do.
There's one more. Do we need one more in here?
Yep.
Okay.
So.
Read it for us again, if you would, uh.
The council member make the motion in a second that the ordinance entitled ordinance number twenty twenty-three um, zero, two, zero, seven, dash, oh, three. An ordinance deleting property from the tax increment finance district for the city of West Liberty Urban Renewal Area of the city of West Liberty, Iowa, person to section four with three point one nine of the code of Iowa now be put upon its final consideration and adoption. The mayor put the question on the final consideration and adoption of the ordinance and roll call being called. So I need a council member to make a motion.
Motion. I second my role.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded as stated. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This is also a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah.
Councilmember Martinez? The motion carries five to zero. Great.
We did it.
We're getting good at this, guys.
And I'm gonna set a date for here.
Yes, we'll move on to eleven D. This is a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on this same, uh, urban renewal area. Question. Is there a motion to, uh, approve this resolution?
Motion to approve resolution.
And a second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this resolution. What date are we looking at? That'll be our March seventh. March seventh meeting.
Seven thirty oh one.
It's listed in your resolution. Will be looking at such a one.
Yep.
There's a motion and a second to set the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. This is also a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez? The resolution passes five to zero. Item eleven E. This is, uh, receiving and filing the Parks and Recreation Department, uh, Master Parks Plan. Is there a motion to receive and file this plan?
Motion to receive and file the plan. Second.
Moved and seconded to, uh, uh, receive and file the, the Parks and Recreation Plan. Uh, is there?
We're just note that, uh, Nick, the park director, uh, to the few of the available essential professionals, he's kind of getting the detail on it. Uh, his, his board has approved it and may ask for you folks to receive it.
Oh, okay.
There was at least a couple of community meetings that were held and. The park department and, uh, the park board.
I think that would be great if, uh, we had a work session to go through it, it's an important. Thing to understand what their plans are, I think. I think that'd be great. If you guys like the idea. Yeah, that's a great idea. Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to receive and file this Master Parks Plan, all those in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero, item eleven F. Uh, this is. Considering using. ARPA funds to upgrade the city's financial software to INCODE ten. I was. Kind of. Maybe expecting a, the room to erupt in cheers at the sound. Cause I know that city hall staff is very excited about this. Is there a motion to approve this, uh? This action and then we'll discuss. Moved and seconded. Uh, who's gonna walk us through this one?
Work with the other sharing together, so we propose, we put an action plan information in front of you, giving you the history. Currently, the. Program financial hub we're working with is thirteen years old. So, um, if it was a vehicle, it's depreciated out, so, um, it's like it's software, so that means it depreciated out. A long time ago. There has been over the years Tyler, uh, McDonald's is the. Is the corporation who has the municipality software. Um, at that time, it was the Cadillac of the time, even as they're stated. You know, it's depreciated out.
Now it's the Pinto.
And I'll keep it short, so INCODE has upgraded into what's called. Faster. The, now the Cadillac. And so within that system, it allows. For more growth. Um, to, it allows more integration, um, not just within the INCODE that then typically if there's some other. Outside modules or, um, software, for example, with meters, um. With time clocks, things of that nature, it, it allows more for that growth and integration with different products if needed. Um, but most importantly, what we need to do, we need to get our base started. And that would be the INCODE ten upgrading and then from there we requested to have specific modules that we know. Can be, um, of efficiency and accuracy and that we definitely need. Payroll, we've been requesting to update payroll. To have an automated system from the time clock and the, and the calculating. It, it takes Sherry and I, you know. Both about sixteen hours to just do the first process in a payroll, that's not even with data entry, that's. You know, and again, it's part of our job, but if you make it more efficient. Um, if we could go this route and we can't go that route unless we have an updated software. The other part is called community development, which would also allow us to become more efficient with, um, code enforcement. Use since and then issuing building permits. Um, it has some really good tools in there about tracking or keeping archive records, um, whether it's new permits. Um, existing permits, following out, closing out, um, those buildings, um, but then too with the nuisance and the code enforcement pieces. And, and archiving and following through on those documentation, so.
What questions does?
So it looks like it's gonna be sixty two thousand two hundred, but it says a recurring fee of ten thousand seven hundred and ninety, is that per year?
Yeah, we already have an annual fee. It is, uh, a Christmas. And that produce, that's like for theirs for four, we don't pay like per support fall, we, that's included when we're. Also, if there's any issues that they have to update, they also need those as well. Um, and then if any of the modules have issue, like bugs in them, it fixes those as well throughout that entire thing.
And the sixty two thousand looks like just labor to get you all set up and trained and for the software itself.
Yeah, and then that's for the other modules as well, the only one that is not listed on there is the, um, implementation of being able to have. Customers be able to see their bills, I have reached out to Lucas, who is our representative to. See how much it would cost to implement that and you can get back to me with that information, so there could be a possibility where that would be a little bit different. Just based on that information. I really wanna implement. Um, wanting customers to have access to set up an online and be able to view their bills, be able to be able to. Like email versions of it, yeah, so we offer a form of it right now through Quadiant. Um, but it doesn't allow us to email one email address with multiple accounts, this is something that would allow them to be able to see those online. And then signing out of those people's statements.
Um, is this, is this software considered like the industry standard, I mean, like our other, our other cities using the same software? Right, like I'm thinking at school, if we wanna get software to do something, usually we like bid several different, you know, companies or several different, but then there are some. There's some proprietary software that like only one company like. Like, you know, has some help, something like this is it, this is legit.
Yep, municipalities have only just very limited options when it comes to this data tech. Um, and Summit, I think is their combined now, but it would not meet, it was, do not meet. That we're running with ours because we're a midsize, but we operate almost as a large size because of each other. So that is why, you know, we continue to work with Tyler.
So let me just make sure that I'm clear here, you are asking the council to approve this. Right here, but you said it might change a little bit.
And that it's dependent, so we had to reach out to another person to see if it's included in one of the modules that we already have.
What happens then if it changes, I guess is my question. You're gonna bring it back.
That's just like that's part of it.
Okay, that would be something additional that would come back.
That if it's not included in one of those items. And this is all cloud based as well, so the upgrades and everything happen. Directly in this program, um, the other thing for you guys to be aware of is that training, they're like fading out. The INCODE nine version that we have because everybody is moving to the INCODE ten, so there's tons of training for that portion. It's not as we need for what we currently have.
Hey, any other discussion or questions? Uh, it is, has been moved and seconded to approve. Uh, city staff's. Uh, recommendation to, um, upgrade to INCODE ten with, with the, the. The cost that's listed here. Any other discussion? This would then be a roll call vote, council member McFerrin. Council member Dominguez. Council member Smith. Council member Schultz. Council member Martinez. Motion carries five to zero. Where are you guys going out tonight to party?
A lot of work that went into getting all that information, so.
I just know that it, it's gonna make your jobs a lot easier.
And you can export.
Export reports and.
I'm so excited.
I know it's a big deal, having old soft, working with old software is terrible, so this, I. Something that you're looking at every single day, right, that, that, many, many people at City Hall are looking at every single day, so. Good, no, it's a big deal. Um, we'll move on to item eleven G, set the date for the, the budget work session for February twenty eighth. At six PM, is there a motion to set this date?
Motion to set the date, second, is there any way we can start at six thirty or will that like not be enough time?
Mister Oberlin.
Or can I come, can I come at six thirty and you guys start at six, or like, I don't, I don't wanna throw anything off, I just also have Jasmine until six and I don't wanna be late.
If you wanna start at six thirty and it was just, it would run a little bit longer, I mean, I'm just. I put a time on there and that is completely up to you folks as to what time you wanna start.
How long do you think?
I'm hoping that we can get for the people general fund discussion. Um, and then we'll have to set another date for proprietary, but I'm running out of time because I have to get it posted. For the entire budget to be approved.
That, that's gonna be an issue every work session, right?
Ends the first week of March. Yeah, it's tip three, you could start the meeting. If that would be okay, that'd be the last week that I have an issue.
At five thirty?
I mean, at a county level, it's probably, you know, um, I think it would be. Priority for you to be at the county level with that budget. Um, and then what we can do is. I would be more than happy to sit down with you one on one and we can go through what we've discussed. For anything that you weren't able to be here for that work session, you're gonna have, there'll, there'll be other work sessions, we'll have another work session and then. You're also gonna have the opportunity, I mean, we'll go through the budget here in public hearing and things like that, so. As long as we just stay with the equation, it's, but I, I know how important those to be present at the table at the county level is as well, so. Unless you want a different, unless you want a different date, I mean, I'm just saying, I, you know, running out.
Let's, yeah, let, let's clarify that, is that correct, so twenty, February twenty eighth. Right, the twenty first is our council meeting. And this is a separate day. Right, so it could be later and could run even ninety minutes if we started at six thirty, if we wanted to.
You'll be checked out by the time we get to the council. It's just a lot to take.
Okay, so we will proceed with. Setting the date. Um, for this budget work session. On February twenty eighth. At six thirty PM. I think we're okay with that, if, uh. Can we proceed with the motion as stated?
Motion as stated.
Uh, we have a motion and a second actually, but are we okay with? With the way it's done, yeah, okay, all those in favor say, uh, first of all, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no, okay, the motion carries five to zero, thank you. Great, we'll move on to, uh. To reports. Mister Foley, thank you for, uh. Hanging in here with us. Um, tonight and, uh, we're ready for whatever you have to share with us.
All right, first thing I'd like to share is Rainbow and Maxon, um, our staff had a meeting with BHMG today. Found out that they're gonna, um, go out for bids in mid, mid February and then open the bid, have you guys open the bids in March? So that, um, is good to get moving, I also talked to Jay Simon. From All American today, I told him that those bids were getting ready to go out, so to. Kind of alert the electricals, even though they don't do relocations, they know people that are in the business, so. He was very interested. And then also, um, I asked him on a schedule for Rainbow and Maxon, he told me by the.
BHMG, that's, that's the electrical portion of that project. Make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes, sir, that is the electrical portion, it's a separate contract. So also I talked to Jay Simon and asked him to put together a schedule, he's not sure when exactly they're gonna get started, but he told me by the. End of February this month, he will have a firm schedule that we can share with the council, so. That's what he'll be working on for a while here, the next thing is well number two. Talked to the city manager, he suggested we get, get moving quickly on trying to get well number two. The DNR portion of the well for rehab to, to plans completed. So in two weeks at the next council meeting, we'll come back to you, we have been starting on those plans and we'll bring a. Draft set of plans of that part of it, the part of making the well room inside of the powerhouse. Is still a little bit going slow, I do have, um, somebody that came back from, uh, leave and. She was on maternity leave and is starting on that Monday, so we should be moving both those projects along very quickly now. That's all I have for tonight, unless you have questions.
Any questions from Foley? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
City manager Oberlin.
And I know, uh, chief didn't get in, 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 in your package, it's not listed in. You have any questions, I might be happy to answer any questions that you have. And one of the things that we talked about, we wanted to get Leo getting the well done, because we know the rig is gonna take a while, we, we'd like to get the well worked done. So Ed can get his roof, um, prepared or, or new roof. Because he's had leaks for several years. That's kinda why we're pushing to get the well worked done, they, they didn't protect that. That became, then get the roof done and they can worry about doing the inside and work around the wellhead before they.
They, do they have to go out the roof with the?
There's actually a. Doghouse that was put in, there was a hatch, so when they do that well work, they'll actually come down through that. And they'll be up there walking around and Ed doesn't wanna get his roof fixed before that. The well in place, then he can get his roof done and then they can do the work inside, so. That's kinda why we went that way to try to get that changed a little bit.
Did the interview go for the police, the police officer?
I will, uh, it, it went very well, I'll let chief speak to that, I think he has some news I need to share with you on that. And I think the interview went very well, the chief, the mayor Anderson, myself and Sergeant Bearman all sit on it. I'll, I'll let chief share the information.
Chief Whirling, do you wanna give us an update on, uh? Police department hiring?
Yes, so, um, Sergeant Bearman sent me the name and number of a person who is actually involved in our community. And formerly worked at our department, um, in two thousand three, two thousand four. So we conducted an interview, uh, his name is Dustin Brooks. Uh, did the background check, everything looks good and I extended him an offer today which he accepted and he has a tentative start date of February twenty second.
Good news.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that's great. Any other questions? Mister Tibbers, you have anything to share?
How are those Christmas lights? The removal of the Christmas lights. Is that the tree, does that include the tree? Are the tree trimmers done? Or they're just finished section one? Done for the year?
Um, Miss Woodson, would you like to give us a report?
Start with indications. Um, so the city calendar has been updated. December, that will include all filters, route changes, events, um, and then I did even go ahead and implement the. Printable links on the city calendar page as well as a link to the Google. As well as a link to the Google Calendar, so that is able to be added to your home Google. Calendar. Um, I had multiple people test it out for spannably.
Right.
Um, and then most of what I've been trying to do for all three accounts is work on consistent branding for future posting. Set up templates that are just easily edited, so they're shared such as the city council, the public hearing, stuff like that. Um, I did complete um, a social media marketing and a public relations certificate course. Um, for almost a total of twenty four training credit hours, um, which was really, really nice. And they've been a really, really big help. And then we did expand, we updated the Twitter account. Expanded to Wednesday and it did go ahead and expand to Instagram. Just because since it's owned by Facebook now, it's covered by the Meta Business Group and it's really easy, but just go ahead and push things through there as well.
If you, council members, if you have, uh, if you have. City of West Liberty council member on your LinkedIn, you can go back and update it and now you'll get the logo. So it actually looks nice on your LinkedIn if you care about your LinkedIn like I do. I wanna see the logo, so thank you. Yeah, very nice.
Yep, it is linkable now, um, which is handy. I did go ahead and include analytics. We don't have any for Instagram yet, just because A, we are under. Um, a hundred followers, so it really doesn't kick in until then. Um, but we do have twenty new followers in the last week, so.
There you go.
Getting there, we're, we're, we're getting there. Um, the analytics are gonna look really, really nice. This month, just because a lot of these are either new accounts or they haven't been active for a while. Twitter especially is not gonna look that nice next month. We're gonna even out a lot more. Um, I did include top posts and their ratings. My goal for. The upcoming months is A to grow our social media following, the more people that we can reach. Uh, it looks like as of right now, our Facebook is the big one and we're only reaching about twenty five hundred people. Um, so if I can get that closer to what our actual city size is, I would be happy. I am still working with the big imprint to update the city website pages. I know I owe Cassie a whole bunch of stuff. Um, right now, especially with Parks and Rec and then. My next goal uh, is going to be meeting with all of our department heads to see. What we can do education wise to share from the different departments. Um, we do have. Specific departments like police, parks and rec, uh, fire and EMS, and then the library. That really have their own pages, but I still wanna showcase our utilities as well. Um, and then I'm working with Leon updating our city's social media policy. My goal is to be able to put that. Um. For, together for you guys by March.
Great. Thanks for all your work on that. Questions from Ms. Woodson?
And she did attend the Chamber of Commerce today. Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Having that calendar updated on the website is a, is a big deal. That's, that's great.
Yep.
So it's digital. You don't have to go to the PDF version. Um, that's really nice. Um, safety committee report was something that council asked to have included in, 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 uh, in your packet. After our report from the insurance company. Uh, do you wanna just touch on that briefly?
Yep, uh, we passed. Um, the first second is just gonna be our meeting minutes from the um. January meeting. The majority of this is notes taken by Adam that I extrapolated in minutes. I was not able to depend. Um, the big ones are going to be um, all of our committee meetings and moving to the library. Um, I am working with Stacy at I M W C A. A with these reports, I'm forwarding these onto her, so they are seeing. Uh, us participating a little more actively in the safety culture there. There are, she did present us specialized dates for um, electrical trainings. She said the electric department just has to select whatever dates they want. Uh, to attend. There's a few ones, but they're not until like September and October, so they got time. Um, and then. The expenses recommended by the committee were shark's containers that has already been taken care of. Uh, through fire and EMS, they're actually using their. System that they already have, and so we're using them as a drop off point uh, for any containers that are gonna be in any other city buildings. Uh, we did go over one incident report. It was a fall related incident that happened in December. Um, it was an ocean recordable. Um, the recommendations from the city for the un. To remove unsafe trip hazards, and then through the area lighting, both have already been completed.
Okay, good to know.
Yep, our January training was postponed due to illness of the instructor. Um, the. Topics covered are going to happen later on in the year for our field. Um, departments. And then we just have the upcoming training topics for the next four months. Um, it's gonna be in between all employees and. The field employees, all of our utility departments, parks, rec, et cetera, um, and then the gates and times there.
Excellent.
And we do have Stacy and Devo will be attending the next city committee meeting in February.
Correct.
Uh, they're representatives from.
From I N D C A, it came spoke.
From, yeah, from our.
Yeah, they, they wanted to come for our.
Okay, let me make sure I have this right, is it, what it, I M W C A.
Is the municipal workers. They're the ones that supply our workers comp.
So there, it's a pool, right? For workers comp? And how, and then I, what is I cap?
I cap.
I would create any.
Insurance rule. Our automobile liability, all that kind of insurance. I M W C A. Is through the Iowa League of Cities, but they kind of partner with I cap to provide the work comp because.
Okay.
That's why the league can provide that.
So I cap those property and.
Property liability.
And liability and. I M W C A does workers comp. Great, super. Uh, Ms. Gertz, could you give us an update on the reconciliation report?
I'm just provided a report, um, sharing I. Within that report, what we've worked through in the last couple of weeks of profit and for re reconciliation. We just continue to work on the previous fiscal year comments in line uh, with getting prepared for this current operate.
So is it proceeding uh, kind of according to your, your plan?
Yeah, we, we hit some bumps in the road simply because we've had other priorities that have come into our, our day to day work. But we'll continue to keep working at it diligently if we can. And I think we're pretty close to having the resolution for the amounts that we discussed. Um, but it's just one of those things when you're working with that piece is like you get going down this direction and then. All of a sudden the transaction employee will walk to another direction, so it's just. Taking a breath and making sure we're taking the right time to get it right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and all of our staff has been um, very uh, good about uh. Pulling up their sleeves and getting to work with us. You've been able to delegate some of the other work off to them. And they've been assisting in that, and then where we pulled other staff members, oh, we need to do that. Um, and those staff members have um, assisted as well, so. We're appreciative of that.
Excellent. Councilmember Dominguez, do you wanna give us a update?
So in your packet, there's a letter that I had actually written Ethan when, or sorry, the mayor, when Ethan became the mayor. Um, just to kind, kind of um, bring him up to speed. I also did this for him for the. Arthur stuff that Ashley and I were trying to figure out.
Um, very helpful.
Yeah, and so it, it, I figured it'd be helpful to put it in the packet as well, so thank you Lee for doing that. For the newer council members and for anyone else who wants to um, kind of a reference of where we're at right now. It gives a, a really brief. Um, quick kind of history and we won't be going over that. Is in detail for February thirteenth, because we wanna save that time to really get into the details of the new twenty eight E. Document that we have been drafting, so if you get a chance to read through it. Um, before then, that would be really beneficial. Um, and basically on the last page, you'll see that there's the timeline in the to do. We're a little bit, we find where it says twenty eight E, agency official start is. At the end of January of twenty twenty three, uh, but we're still having some great strides to move forward and we're hoping to. Um, you know, present on what we've come up with. Um, and basically we'll be just going through all of the articles and. We've highlighted areas that us as a task force feel we need more information and feedback on either. By a consultant or, or feedback from the parties that are involved. Um, but it is a really bright start, I think, and. I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Only that, and thank you for that, and I think this is really helpful. I would just say, I, I would just encourage council to take some time to. Um, kind of try to wrap your head around all of this and. You know, reach out to councilmember Dominguez or McFerrin or staff or myself. Um, with, you know, with whatever questions you have. It's just, it's very confusing. It's, there's so many moving parts to it, you know, and so. On, on Monday, February thirteenth, when we, when we meet and talk about it, you know, it's like. Gonna be a fire hose, right, of kind of all this information, so I would definitely try to invest a little bit of time, you know, to really. Figure out what questions you might have.
And um, I also would know that. The mayor did a great explanation. I, I shared it on my Facebook page, but he really explained. In um, Ken's podcast, last podcast, like kind of the difference between. Our relationship now compared to the partnership that we will be proposing. On Monday, and so if you get a chance, you can go to uh, Building Together Podcast through We Lead and. Listen, it's like the seven minute mark, but the whole thing is great too, so you can, you know, listen to the whole thing.
Appreciate that.
But um, there is a really great explanation and we will touch upon that a little bit too on Monday of what the difference is.
Mister Brooks, how do we find the podcast?
You can either search for West Liberty, Building Together on your podcast epic choice, or go to We Lead.
Ken has been doing a monthly podcast and uh, it's been, it's been fun to be a part of it, so. Have a listen. Okay, anything else?
Just like the, just to finish up and say, isn't that number um, being present in those task force meetings? I just wanna commend um, councilmember Dominguez and McFerrin and. Um, and we're mayor attending those, and it's just really good to see the positive synergy that's coming from those discussions. And then um, the willingness to, you know, listen and, and better the communication among um, those individuals that are at that table. So I, as a staff member, I appreciate the work that you're putting towards that, so thank you.
Great, good to hear. Yeah.
Yes, so. Is the city going to be having any holiday hours coming up for March? I wasn't sure. That's, but are you, are you?
We don't have a March. Unless you're gonna last have St. Patrick's.
Well, is, is, did he?
I did.
City Hall and City Services is going to be open on the twentieth or not?
No.
It'll be close.
We will get that, she will remember. Not me, because when I say me. He will remind.
We will, I will say it, but she's.
So I, I, I do actually have those.
There you go.
Great, and I also wanted to let you guys know that I will be training tomorrow, Thursday, Friday. For my clerking stuff, so. I will not be in the office. I'm going, we have asked me to go home so that I do not get interrupted. Um, so I am finishing the completion of my clerk schooling.
Does that look like, is it like videos and quizzes? Is it like online?
Interaction, you, they make you, if they cannot see you on the camera, they will actually kick you out of the class. So the virtual clerk school, it's a little bit. Sitting in person because it's making it to you. Cannot see you if you do not respond. And then you don't get the. Credit and you have to.
Tell them that.
It'll only make her a better clerk, so.
Email, got it. Anything else? I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Meeting adjourned.